Chip, how are you doing back there? Are we, yeah, good, alright. I got a. Robbie. I got a text from Scott, said he's running a couple of minutes late, he wanted us to just go ahead and start. So, everybody's ready, let's go ahead and start. With our agenda review. Uh, all the normal stuff, we have a, uh. With the minutes of the, the couple of budget hearings, in addition to the regular minutes, we have a presentation from the Conservancy. Uh, our normal reports. And then, uh, only three new business items, so real short work. New short business agenda. Uh, the first one is the IGA on the elections, and since. Diana's gone, Diane's gone, are you gonna talk about that?
Sure. Um, as everyone may recall or remember, we've been using Fulton County, uh, the last two elections to run our municipal elections. And this year, um, on election day, on November 4th, the county will actually be here running, uh. Public Service Commissioner election, so they are going to run, or the proposal is to run, um, the city elections at no cost.
Nice.
There will be a cost if we have a runoff election, um. So there, uh, would be a cost if for some reason, um, we would have a runoff election, but the November 4th election would be done at no cost.
Only have two people running in each.
Right, so there.
Right, so it seems like it's hard to, yeah.
Yeah.
Unless you get even number, what happens then? Anyway. Any, any questions about that, for anybody?
Uh, I guess I can do on camera.
Uh.
Tighten it up.
Oh, and I thought somebody finally was gonna arrest Mike for something.
Oh, it's the camera, got it.
I'm, I'm gonna wait, oh, I see. Nice. Hi. Are, are we ready to move on, okay? The, the next one is, uh, a building for the fire department, Greg?
The request. Is for council to approve, uh, the amount of twenty-nine thousand dollars to be spent with a, uh, particular contractor. Uh, for, and that's Riley Contracting for the, um, site development and installation of this twenty-four by twenty-four metal building to serve as storage for the rescue boat. And the UTV, here out of space.
Good, any questions on that, anybody?
Is that just a building? It's just a building, no concrete? I was just looking for.
Aggravated other people were doing, it is just, uh, that is concrete.
Okay.
Uh, that's, so that's a four inch, in some places in six inch, concrete pad, twenty, twenty-four and a little bit more. To take, to accept the twenty-four, twenty-four building.
Okay.
And that, and that includes a mechanical, uh, roll-up.
No, that's, that's like twenty-nine for just a building, I said, there's gotta be some concrete or something else for that.
Yeah, 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 concrete, don't, we're around five, five thousand of that.
Hello? Alright, uh, next up is, um. Capital grant or capital request for the in-video, in-car video systems, and that's Kevin.
Uh, yeah, so this is a two-part from the same, uh, vendor, Axon, uh, the first part is. Uh, our. Is three, uh, dash cams. Um, these will tie in with the body cams that the officers already have, and so it's just, it adds an extra level of transparency, it'll have the dash cam view and then tie into the officer's body cam. Um, I wanted to start with three. Um, eventually, I would like to go to having them in all our patrol vehicles, but as you can see, just three, it's, it's thirty thousand dollars. For five years, so I wanted to start with three, and then, um, the good thing about those is they also have. They also have built-in ALPRs, which is the license plates readers, so it can detect on stolen vehicles, you know, and, and, and other types of things. Um, the other part is a VR training platform. Uh, this is a unique platform, it's, if you think of virtual reality, it's a set of goggles, and I put in some literature, um. From that, that you can see, it's, it's a way that we can do use-of-force training, we can do situational training, we can do all types of training without ever having to leave the building. It comes stored with, I think, five hundred scenarios already to start with.
But, I already switched mine out, sorry, we're having a.
No, you're fine, um, it can be, it can be updated as needed to. Any type of scenario that we can think of, um, it can do use of, you know, we can use it for use-of-force training, we can do it.
It's pretty.
Um, we can do use-of-force training, force-on-force training, um, just all, again, without ever having to leave the building, so. And when we, um, switched over to the Taser tents, they use this training, this, this platform to, to do the training, and we, we now. Have two officers, both of our sergeants are already certified to use this platform, so it's not like we have to send them to any extra training with this, as soon as we get it, start using it.
No.
Oh, 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 yes, yes, yeah, so when they put him in new, I thought you meant portable, like we could, no.
No, 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 I mean, just like.
Correct, for the life of the car, and then the next car, yes, they would just take it out and put it in the car, yes, correct, yeah, sorry. So. Correct, and also, if, um, be, same with our body cams, because of the contract with Axon, if, say, in two years they come out with a new system, the Fleet Four, we automatically get the upgrade at no cost.
Okay, good, yeah. Technology's caught up with itself.
Hopefully. Hopefully.
And that is, that is it for that, and. Somehow. There it is, I managed to cover up my work session page. Let's move these around a little bit, because Scott is the first thing up here. I'll talk real quickly about the link trip, uh, so the link trip is, uh, something that happens every year, uh, Atlanta Regional Commission takes. About eighty people now, from, uh, around the Atlanta region, uh, it's a couple mayors, it's people that run. You know, things like, uh, homeless agencies, it's, it's people that work in basically every facet of regional leadership in the region. Um, and I. Always feel really honored to be asked, because we're by far and away the smallest thing that goes, uh, but I am known for asking uncomfortable questions in sessions, so I think I get invited sometimes, just because I do that. This time we went to Washington DC, and, you know, it's interesting, so every city's unique, uh, we've been to a lot of different cities over the course of time, um. And you pick up different things and different ones, and some of them feel very relevant to us, and some of them don't feel as relevant, um. You know, we, we were in, uh, Austin a few years ago, and the focus there was on homelessness, and, and we have homelessness here, but it's not the same sort. That they're dealing with in a lot of big cities, just as an example, this particular one was focused on data centers, which felt very topical, uh, because it's such an issue around us, and we've had them come here and ask to build in Chat Hills. And, uh, the biggest hub for data centers in the country right now is actually in Virginia, just outside of Washington DC. And so, this, this, uh, set of meetings, we actually were staying just outside of DC, uh, in. Virginia, we also went, spent some time down in Maryland, just outside of DC, in areas where they're dealing with the data centers and, and kind of. Just a lot of conversation about best practices on data centers and all of that, and also just a reminder that, you know. That the demand for them is huge and inexorable, and they're growing at an incredibly high rate, um. The folks. That came and talked to us here, um. You know, they were talking about doing nine-plus million square feet of data center warehouses in Chattahoochee Hills, and. You know, our, our first comment was, well, that's not allowed here at all in any way. And they said, you know, it doesn't really matter, because it's a state priority, and the state often will preempt zoning to get those things done. And, and I've talked about this before, we were lucky at the time that Georgia Power said that they didn't have enough power to bring to this area for it to happen here. Now, I think a part of that is actually what's happening at, uh, Project Sail, which is just down the road, uh, but there's a substation right there, and it was, I guess. Uh, both a combination of timing of power supply additions that Georgia Power is doing, and just the ease of running it there that has brought it to that spot. Uh, and, and, you know, the, the takeaways were, were several, one is that it is a big driver of tax revenues for places that have it. Uh, it also has huge impacts on infrastructure that most people don't take into account when they're thinking about, uh. The, the tax revenues that they might get, and, uh, you have to be very careful if you're doing them, to do them in a way that doesn't cause your city a lot of damage. The damage they don't do is traffic, they're not like a typical warehouse that has trucks going in all day. Uh, the damage that they do is on infrastructure, uh, otherwise, uh, a lot of them use a ton of water. Uh, the, the cheapest and easiest way to cool them is just by running water through them continuously. It's waterfall cooling, basically, I mean, you know, think about this, it's, it's racks of servers, thou, stacked thirty feet high, they just put off a lot of heat. Uh, what some of the places have gone to now is something that's more like regular air conditioning, where, yeah, they use water, but they recycle it a lot before they, they replace it, so it's not as big a demand on the water supply, but it still. Demand on water supply, the biggest thing is power, and it's not just the issue of power itself, it's the issue that it, it requires so much new infrastructure. And so, you know, they, they'll say, they charge these guys higher rates, and they charge residential users and all of that, but the fact is, in a place like Georgia, to add. As many as they're hoping to add over the course of the next ten years, they're gonna have to build another couple, uh, facilities at Plant Vogel, just to supply enough electricity for it. And those cost so much money, that no matter what you're charging for their rates to your industrial users, residential rates go up too, and they've seen that in Maryland. Uh, so that's the, that's the negative, um, you know. It never shuts off, the other big thing, and, and we talked about this, you know, when they were, when they were showing us the plans that they were hoping to do in Chattahoochee Hills. They have to be up all the time, and the power in, as we know, in Chattahoochee Hills is not up all the time, so those things have generators. And it's not just like a little bit of generators, on the nine million square feet, I, I, I counted it, I don't remember exactly what it was, but it was like a hundred and seventy generators. And you think, okay, I've got a generator outside of my house, it's not such a big deal, but these generators are the size of a diesel locomotive, each one. And they're lined up outside those buildings on pads, uh, you know, thirty or forty to a building, to one of these million-square-foot buildings. And they have to test them at least once a week, and imagine a hundred and seventy diesel locomotives turning on a mile from your house once a week, and the din that would be, just that, you know, seemed like such a. Like I said, they, they did not come here, and in the meantime, that land's been zoned for something else, so that's not likely to be coming back to that spot, but. Uh, it, it's just a, it's just one of those huge issues, and the thing that they said more than anything was, you need to have your zoning in place, like, if you're even considering doing them. You need to have all of your zoning in place that really talks about how and why and where. Now, we have, in our current zoning, the ability to do really small data centers, and you see those sometimes, like, there are some in downtown Atlanta. Where, you know, like, on the west side, there's one that's about a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. And it's buried in buildings, and you can't see it and all of that, and even that is a huge tax generator. But even that would need three or four of those big generators, and, you know, power impacts and, and all that, so it's just one of those things to think about, whether that really makes sense on any level here. And how you would fit it in, you know, we've got the comp plan update coming up, and, and it would be one of those places where. Um, they, I've gotten some material that they gave us on kind of what those best practices are from some of the people that were running those programs for cities in. Uh, both Maryland and Virginia, that we can feed into that process, so that we can have that to talk about as we're. Uh, as we're looking at that in the comp plan update. And other than that, I mean, you know. All the typical, getting up really early for breakfast, and getting back really late at night, those, those things are not easy. Conference world, alright. Uh, Scott, we went ahead and, and went out of order, um, if you wanna talk about the ethics ordinance, you ready to do that, or do you wanna go to something else first?
I apologize for my late, lateness here, um. We. Uh, when, when starting out as a new councilperson. Uh. As part of that training, we were made aware of the, of the whole, you know, city of ethics structure, and. Uh, Roddy and I had talked about that, and then we, um, over, over time. Uh, thinking about. You know, what that means and what's involved, and, and, uh, just kind of talking about it casually, coming to find that we, in fact, are one of the only cities in Fulton that does not have, uh, an ethics ordinance. Uh, and feeling like that would certainly be salutary, uh. In terms of, uh, you know, getting us into line with common practices across the county and state. Um, I started looking at, at, uh, ethics ordinances and sort of studying them, city to city, trying to see what. Different bodies felt was important, floated the idea in the council, and, and, uh, got some response, got lots of feedback from Robbie, who had some, uh, suggestions about, um. I guess the, how would you characterize it, Robbie, the, the. Some of the potential difficulties in implementing an, an ethics ordinance and so on. But with that. Uh. With that thought in mind, what I wanted to do with this, uh, with this item. Was to, was to. Bring sample language and share it with, with everybody, and then solicit, s- since we all need to come, come to a form of agreement on. What kind of ordinance we would put in place, the, uh, the, the, our, our agenda book. Uh, has, has had the, um, the. Uh, generic model that the GMA offers, and, uh, and that generic model has an ethics panel. Model that it turns out isn't followed across the state, there are all kinds of different ways of implementing, uh, implementing a sort of ethics panel to whom complaints get, uh. Get sent, and then they get evaluated, and so, in, I, I ended, I probably, with some help, looked at probably. Fifteen or twenty different ethics ordinances from across the state, looking for, you know, kind of comparing what different people do. Sometimes it's a bit funny, because you can, you, you see what they focus on, and almost imagine, you know, what abuses were they trying to overcome in implementing a certain kind of thing, but, and, but in our case. I, uh, what I wanted to do was, and, and this is part of the reason for my lateness, was a technical breakdown. But I wanted to circulate language, uh, for, for everyone to share and, and solicit input and dis, and, uh. The circulation of things that, that you all find would, would be important, salutary to the city, and one of the things that, that I would ask. We all focus on, and this is, this is just a, again, kind of generic language that, uh, that. Every one of these things, and again, the formatting got sideways, but every one of these is. Is taken from an already approved ethics ordinance somewhere in the state, and the, and the, um. And Robbie, there's. Um. And we don't, I'm not asking for us to go over this tonight, but I'm, I, I'm sharing this with the idea that then we could. Uh, continue this item on the schedule as, uh, through some work sessions to get discussion of. What sorts of, uh, what sorts of ethics standards, and again, no, there's nothing here that's. Surprising or, or even terribly interesting, it's all just taken from ethics ordinances in, in. Cities that are, that offer some relative comparison, but I wanted to direct your attention to, uh, on the last page, first sentence, uh. And I think that language is maybe coming from Buchanan, but the idea of an ethics committee, when it's, when it's arrived at, uh. The footnote says, an ethics committee can be formulated in many ways, and this, and here I'm speaking to, and, and these haven't been shared with the public, but obviously you all have seen them in the city email. Um, and, uh, the concern with the idea that, uh. It's the foot, first footnote on the last page there, um. An ethics committee can be formulated in many ways, whether it's a standing body or one constituted for a specific case, either by a lottery of citizens, draw pool of citizens and officials. Or other standard methods of assembling a conflict-free and unbiased quorum. And another example would be to avoid workload bias by having an intake committee that vets complaints, and decides whether they need a, a given standard, and we can acquire those standards, and I'm sure. Uh, Rick can provide us with any, any number of those sorts of things, and then, uh. And then have a secondary body that adjudicates, and so, I think there's, there's, you know, there are a lot of ways to handle it. And I didn't wanna come and say, here's the draft, approve or disapprove or something like that, I want us to talk about it, to get a, get. Get everybody on board with an ethics ordinance that we can agree with.
Yeah.
And where, and, and where we can. Uh. You know, where we can come to a common draft and circulate it in the, in the packet in future meetings, and begin to, begin to put together. What then would be our ethics ordinance, so I hope that sounds reasonable as an, as an approach. You know, given. That it's essentially an open solicitation, and, and the draft that I'm offering is, is simply language from already approved ethics ordinances, so there's nothing. Controversial or anything, this is pretty in line with most of what you see, and of course, our city attorney can vet, uh, vet a final draft for us.
I've got a question.
Yes.
So, so the question is, on the handout we were giving, um, in our book.
Yes.
Where there's alternative A, B, C, and D. You want us to read this and then come forward to discuss which one of these? Like, which one of the alternatives we think would fit?
Well, it looks to me, and Rick can probably speak to this more knowledgeably, but it looks to me like there are A, B, C, and D as potentials.
Right.
But, like, some, some cities don't have a standing panel, they, and so.
They're different, like, like you said, all of our surrounding cities have. So much more population than we have, they are much bigger in size, and so, you know, like everything, we're kind of different, so tailoring.
Right, the idea that we don't need to have a big. Body of adjudicators and stuff is obvious, because, I mean, it's probably not gonna come up every once in a while, but it seems like something.
Right.
That will come up.
And I think this is something we have brought up, I'm, I really like the pledge that Ruby brought, um.
I can't hear you.
The pledge that Ruby brought a few months ago.
Mm-hmm.
That we looked at to incorporating all that, and I'm, I was just making sure that I understood what part of this we're gonna study, and then come back with. Other input to look at this.
Well, I, I think it's all worthy of study, I mean, I think it's, you know, it's important to remember that a pledge and an ordinance are different things, and one can reinforce the other. But one can't take the place of another, and so, I think, having, you know, taking the pledge, but then having an ordinance that actually allows us to implement is important, so. So, I would say all and both.
Concur.
Yeah, you're on.
I'm an academic, so, uh, if we were in a university, this could stretch out for eons, but I'd, I'd like to think we could be more efficient.
Until we can get this done, and that's all I'm saying.
Oh, sure, I mean, I could all take that pledge today, it's, I mean, obviously, but, but I think putting in, putting an ethics ordinance in place. Is. I mean, I, I guess it depends on how quickly people respond, and I'm happy to be the, the center for that, people can send me. Their questions and ideas, and I can collate all that stuff, and I'll circulate it before the next meeting.
Right.
So, you know, we can have, I can, we can ask the clerk to provide us with a continuance of this item on the next. So, you know, we can have, I can, we can ask the clerk to provide us with a continuance of this item on the next agenda or two.
And also, do you have an example of some of the cities that you spoke about? So we can actually see what they are doing.
So I'd be happy to send links to, to, I mean, any number of cities that, uh, yeah, sure.
I mean, that would be great if we had like two or three that we can look at and then base it on this here and that we can come back and gather that information, which might not take as long as the academic, what you're speaking of.
Yeah, the, um, yeah, I'm happy to do that. I'll send, what I'll do is I'll circulate this, uh, electronically with, uh, with a, a, I don't know, you want five or 10 examples?
I mean, three is good. What you think is the best three, just something we can compare into when we making a decision of what we are going. And we're not going to be like someone else, but at least has it in line.
Sure. And I encourage everybody to, you know, do, take a look and see what's, what's out there. Um,
Can we get like a, I was thinking too, if we, can we get a balanced look at it? Maybe some cities that haven't done it because they're concerned about frivolous lawsuits and people volunteering complaints and accusations and layers upon layers of committees. And some cities have maybe opted not to do that. And then, you know, just, that would be another thought too, just to understand peo- cities that have not wanted to do it.
There are only two in all of Fulton County. There's us and one smaller-
By the state, right? I mean, I mean, I, I liked Ruby's pledge. And then I was thinking about, um, when that originally came up, adding in maybe, um, something at City Hall where we require an annual ethics training on ethics and open meetings and some of the things that we can imply.
Like the GMA, like the GMA.
Yeah.
Or something.
Well, I, I'll say this, Scott. Um, oh, go ahead, Rodney. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'll just whisper.
Go ahead, Richie. We're trying to remember the name of the GMA training.
Oh, it was very, very, um, no, I, I, I can say this from, from looking at some other ethics ordinances that are out there. You know, all you gotta do is go to any city and pull it up and it's there. But the majority of the, of the differences is, is really when it comes to accountability. That's, that's what we have to figure out. Is if there's things in this ethic, uh, policy that are, you know, violated, what is the, the penalty or what is the punishment? Or that's really how the cities that I see vary and how they deal with these different things. But a lot of this is kind of boilerplate, but it definitely, I think by having a policy in place, it, um, you know, it just holds you accountable. And that's something that, uh, you know, I think everybody's interested in. But yeah, I have no problem with that, Scott. Any, I mean, it's, it is a lot to read and go through. But yeah, I have no problem, you know, if it takes a month or two to get it squared away. But that's just from my research telling the rest of the council. That's what I see is you're generally the difference in looking at other cities. It's, uh, how they hold folks accountable and, you know, what, what they did and what that, what that means, you know?
Yeah, I think if, if people get back to me relatively soon, you know, I'll, I'll send this and some comparators. I'll see what I can find to answer Camille's question and, um, and then, uh, I'll circulate that in the next few days. And then depending on how quickly people get back, I'll recirculate in, in the agenda book, what, what comes of that. And then, and at that point, we can start talking about a text and a draft, if you will. If that makes sense.
Scott, one thing I noticed in the, in the draft, and, and I just want to be sure that, I mean, this is probably just because pieces of this came from other places or whatever.
Yeah, there may be some repetition.
Well, and also just where it says things like mayor commission, they're obviously talking about the council, but I mean, also I would think appointed commissions would be something too, right? Like the relationships and all of that.
Yeah, some of them drop it down into appointed bodies and others don't. And I'm not, it's not always-
I just want to be sure that people are clear what your intent was here.
Well, and I should-
In here it was counsel.
No, that would, I mean, my preference would be to have it go all the way down to, you know, to everybody that's working on behalf of the city.
The other thing too is, and I think to, to Camille's point, the one thing that we'd also want to take a look at is experiences that people have had with these when they've been operating under them. Because I've heard horror stories, for example, in City of South Fulton, right? Uh, about claims back and forth and council members suing each other and, you know, just like a constant stream of that. And it, it there, it's just been very expensive from a legal perspective. I don't think anything's ever come from any of it. It's just been expensive and disruptive. And so trying to make sure that whatever you're doing isn't politicizable, right? That it's about acts or emissions rather than, than something where people just add each other.
Yes, absolutely. And I think that, I, I think that's, yeah, the apolitical nature of it and the, and, and I think that goes to the, the idea of like a vetting body.
Yeah, I like that, yeah.
And then what we, sorry.
My experience with it many, many years ago, um, when a city, when a city adopted, um, an ethics ordinance, and I was a city attorney, it got to be a political weapon for a period of time. And the way they stopped it, um, they basically charged me as a city attorney to find an outside local government attorney to look at the allegation and kind of like a magistrate, if you will, to see if there was, quote unquote, like probable cause. And it stopped it. But it was, it was ugly for several months. I mean, it was a lot of just, you know, political stuff.
That's the, that's, yeah, that's the concern about a magistrate, because that's one of the options in the GMA ordinance, right? And as I looked into why people would adopt it that way, that was the general consensus was, you know, there's a legal standard to be met and who better than a judge to manage-
And what we did was being a local government attorney, a city attorney or county attorney, that could not, um, could not be in, in
Relation to-
Fayette County. It had to be outside. So we would want somebody, if you wanted to do that, outside of Fulton and, and Coeida County, so that it's somebody who probably doesn't know any of the folks here or whatever else, and just look at it. And say, okay, is this complaint, does it make sense? Is it really a possible, not that because it's probable cause or finding anybody to be, quote unquote, guilty of it. It's just saying, okay, if the allegations prove to be true that are there, maybe we got an issue. So you put it up, just like you would in the criminal world with a trial, but um, anyways, it's just a gatekeeper.
One of the options.
And, you know, that gatekeeper, in my opinion, should not be anybody really in the city. Get them neutral so that there can't be any, any favoritism one way or the other.
Yeah, that was a harder part of the, like trying to research this stuff, that kind of solution to the issue. And this issue was raised by Robbie very clearly. Um, the, it's kind of hard to find. So, so, you know, you're offering a good solution because, and-
I also think another good way to, to keep it from being abused is to make it very clear what the ethics ordinance, uh, addresses. You know, conflicts of interest, um, that type of thing, and not leave it where it's kind of touchy feely. And then if the council wants to expand it down the road, maybe go into some more esoteric areas and whatnot. But, you know, I would make it very clear that these are the things we want to make sure do not happen with our elected or appointed officials and with, um, city employees. Um, so, again, as you're looking at it, that's just my recommendations. I don't get a vote, uh, obviously, but I'd be happy to, to work with whatever the council presents to me.
That, well, yeah, and, and that would be great. You know, as you speak to the idea of, uh, you know, obviously a lot of these delineate things and, you know, I, I could have brought much, much more, obviously. But when you get into things, you know, issues of like direct and indirect, it all seems pretty straightforward and, and, uh, quantifiable. But as, when you refer to esoteric, can you give me a sense? Because I, I, I'm not a skilled enough reader in the law to recognize what, if I'm reading a piece of esoterica, what am I reading?
Well, it depends on what you, like maybe define as conflict of interest, okay? Uh, obviously a financial interest in a decision to be made very clear.
Right.
But if it's, um, maybe it affects my viewscape from my property or something like, I mean, I'm just trying to think of, you know, what could really be, where you get into the gray areas and it's not definable. Um, but obviously financial interest is key.
Almost all of them are almost restricted to financial interests and influencing employees and city officials, like, uh, you know, I don't know, the academic version of that is telling your graduate students to get your dry cleaning, like, or burden, but the, but, uh, but apparently people do these things. I know, it's weird, but-
But I'm trying to think back so long ago.
Pretty straightforward.
But, uh, we had a complaint and it was dealing with interference with city employees. And you know, so it was talking to a city employee interference or giving direction to a city employee interference. And we end up having a whole evening trial, quote unquote, trial over whether or not conversations with the city employee about any number of things, um, rose to a level of interfering with that person's job.
I see what you're saying. Well, and, and, I mean, and hearing you say that makes me think that as the city gets larger and more complex and the government grows, this is only going to become more important. And so getting it in place now, I think is a good idea. So, all right.
Probably in the, there we go. All right. It's, it's where it says things like, um, if blah, 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 who is related to the third degree of consanguinity or affinity to the mayor or any member of the council. And I mean, you know, their degree of heredity, I, I, I don't know. There's some of this stuff that is, maybe it's important, but then it needs to be in English too, in plain English, right? So it's comprehensible.
Can you, uh, the thing is, I'm having-
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's, 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 it, it's the one in H, just the language in H. I think ninety percent of people reading that wouldn't know exactly what that was talking about, right? And so just to the extent that like you're saying, I, I'm sure. I, I get it. But what I'm saying is like, you know, it would have to be more clear. And yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep.
That's-
Uh, well, and again-
Well, they had to combine their governments, so they had all kinds of issues.
All right.
They had real face in ethics.
That was thinking. Anybody else have any thoughts on that, Scott? Is that?
Uh,
Okay, uh, I, uh, so do we have agreement around, around the council that, uh, that I'll circulate this and interested parties can circulate back draft material or adjustments and comments? And then I'll recirculate a collated version next month?
And we also look at the pledge.
Of course.
Yeah.
I'm for moving along with the pledge.
It has something in place.
Next month and just-
Mm-hmm.
It is this one all the time. Yeah. What's number four? Three and four. That's true. Yeah, yeah, fair enough.
And then the question would be, if we're going to drop it down to include all of our commissions, do they get a say? Because they, I mean, do we talk to them or we just drop it down?
I mean, we can decide that based on what the language says, is what I would say, you know? Give yourselves time to look at it. And I mean, again, this is a work in progress until it's not, right?
Right.
So.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So maybe we can put the pledge on for next month.
I like that idea.
Certainly.
Okay, sounds good.
Sounds good to me.
So we want, do we want to teach, I, just to clarify, so the pledge, we'll do the pledge as a separate item?
Yeah.
From the ethics?
Yes.
Okay.
Totally.
Yep.
Did we have any, I didn't see that we had any suggestions on that, on, on the pledge that you'd submitted. So we're pretty good to go. It's pretty good to go, looks like.
I didn't think nobody had any.
Mm-mm.
No, maybe you could just recirculate the text for the-
I can send it out again.
Good.
Is that, since I'm taking notes for Diane, um, is, would that be on the work session or do you want to go ahead and-
On the action, uh, agenda.
Okay.
I think so. That's what I'm hearing. All right. Uh, next up is the permitting board. Richie.
Okay, yeah, we, um, we put this off a little bit. Just we've had some busy meetings, but anyway, we, we've passed a lot of stuff. And, uh, as I dig into a permitting board, the way I look at it is it would help streamline everything here at, at City Hall, also with the citizens, also with the council. Um, a few of the benefits of a public, um, permitting board is it, it does increase public safety through code enforcement of the UDC. And when I mean code enforcement, I mean, when we do development, when we do building. You know, we work off of a complaint system right now, but when it comes to safety and code, we need to, we, we need to get that under control, especially with this last permit we just handed out. Um, it does reduce hazards. It does ensure all building meets all safety hazards. There's no sense in going back and having to fix anything. I've done a little bit of building myself in, in, at times. Um, the automatic, it automatically increases property values too, by streamlining everything. It's very similar to keeping a record of maintenance on your car. When you have all that in order in the real estate business, a lot of people call it, uh, historical records on your home. It just shows, um, what do you call it? A paper trail of what's been done and what hasn't been done. Um, and it, it just adds value. It always has. Um, and as, as a part of this, you know, I see as a city, you know, we got a few permits out there for people that are going to build in the future. I see this actually being, being created into a job for one person. You know, I know a, as a city, everybody here does three or four jobs. I know Daryl looks at a lot of stuff. Greg does, Mike Morton does. You know, I think this needs to be allocated at the, at the point that we're at right now. It needs to be one person looking at that. Um, who does all that stuff and reports back to Mike Morton if he's got a problem. And that would be a, a big thing with the permitting board. Bring that information back to the city is where they, is where they're standing. Um, a lot of cities use a very good piece of software. Uh, we may have it. I do not know. What it does, a lot of builders use it. It goes from step one, actually from, uh, breaking ground all the way to the CO process, to where you have a timeline when the electric was done, when this was done, when that was done. It helps us keep up with timelines also. If people have permits out there that are fixing to come to an end, or if somebody needs to know, um, they want an extension on a permit, what is that reason? Why do you need an extension? Um, and that gives us information. Um, a process, you know, really what I'm looking for is a process so clear that anybody can understand, a very simple process. You know, building a home literally has about ten steps and a lot of labor in between. If you, if you classify electric, plumbing, framing, concrete, roof, if you get down into it like that. Um, and that's something, if we dog walk it correctly, um, we can make sure our build is, is correct. It's what we want. Better project outcomes because all rules are followed. There's no going back, having to dig something up. You know, you don't have a stray fire pit where, I mean, a fire hydrant where, where it doesn't belong. Things like this just do not happen. It's very similar to building them phases. Once you get one, one piece of the permit done, you've got that cleared off, you know, we can move to the next one. Very simple. Um, and transparency throughout the process. Um, which is huge, you know, we, we would like to know where some of these projects are, where they're at. And I'm a big fan of, uh, seeing something on paper in front of my face. Just easier to read and easier to understand. Um, my idea for the board was simply five to seven members, uh, with two-year terms. And the reason I say two-year terms is because a lot of these permits will go for a year, two years, three years. We wanna, we don't want to dump a whole board and have new people get on it. When, um, same way we do council up here, you know, you don't want everybody to get voted out and new people, nobody knows what's going on. Um, a permit is issued for only what is asked. These will be some of the responsibilities of these, of the permitting board. To make sure that what, what the council approves, what Mike Morton puts on a sheet of paper, these people are following. Um, the board itself would only need to meet, I would say, probably every sixty to ninety days, depending upon the business out there. We've got four projects going. And, um, nobody's due for any upgrades for the next ninety days. Why have a meeting? If their, if their timeline is we'll be done with plumbing and electricity on this date, well, we'll come back and we'll check on you, make sure you're where you need to be. If you've got a holdup, we'll see what that is. Make sure these projects move along. Um, and also, um, if a violation does take place, we need somebody, um, to come give us an explanation of the offense. And also depending upon that offense, have the ability to stop the project until we review it and see exactly what they're doing. Are they doing what they said they were going to do? Are they doing what we asked, asked them to do? Um, they just free will in it. Um, that has come up a couple of times with people building. I get it. Um, but on these big scales, you know, the main thing is, and we talked about this before with, uh, SafeBill. This is something that, um, it actually creates its own job and pays for itself. The amount of inspections that we do. Uh, so we can create that job out of the money that we're already creating. Uh, it's just time to get an individual that does that job. Almost kind of like the park. It's almost time to get somebody with a badge over. That's another subject. But, um, either way. But, um, I'm kind of in the same boat as Scott. I know we've had a lot of busy meetings last few months. You know, I wanted to put it out there, see what people's ideas were, uh, put something together that's, uh, solid. And I think something that, you know what, if I make a phone call, I can, I can call the head of the permitting board and not have to beat up Mike on the phone or find out, because everybody knows Mike does ten different things. And, uh, and where everybody up here does. And I think what it does, it gives us almost like another in, insurance policy. As we've got a, you know, these rules that follow the permanent board brings it to us, then we've got a problem. Cause we've got a, you know, these rules that follow the permanent board brings it to us, and we've got a problem. Then the city will step in and say, hey, you know what? This is what we're doing. But that's kind of all I got on it. I just, um, same thing Scott was saying about the ethics thing. I think, uh, we're at a point where we need to get out ahead of a few things. And just be prepared for them. But that's all I've got. If anybody's got any comments, but I can, you know, put something together in thirty days and have an ordinance. It's no big deal. I'd like everybody's ideas too.
Well, I would like to see something in writing. I hear you, but it, you know, putting it in writing would be more for me to see.
Correct. I'm, I'm also, I'm confused because I'm, I'm hearing a couple of different things. SafeBuild already does permitting inspection for electrical and plumbing and all those things. That's already something that's happening to your point. The people pay for it in their permitting fees. And they do stop work orders if they need to, and all of that's already a part of our process. So. So I, I mean, I, I guess I'm, I'm confused a little bit about. What the problem is. I, I get like Daryl does some inspections with roads and, you know, Mike does some things there, there, there are some things that we're doing. And if we're at the point where we're running out of staff capacity, hiring an extra staff person to do that, I also agree with that. But I'm not sure. Where the gap is that. Citizens that don't have that professional background are going to be helpful. I don't, that part I don't, I don't understand. Um, and if we want code enforcement, that's actual code enforcement. We talked about that too. Code enforcement right now is demand driven because when we've had full-time code enforcement before, it's made the citizens so angry. That the council has backed off on it every time. Because people are calling saying they're telling me to cut my grant, whatever it is, right? And, and that's not a, a general community value out there. So a, again, I'm, I'm just. You know, the, the ethic ordinance is one thing, right? People, there, there are a lot of claims of violation of ethics. And I like the idea of an ethics ordinance because it makes it much easier to say to people, no, actually, there isn't a violation here. And I think that that's useful. Um, but for other things, you want to know what the problem that you're solving for is. And I think a lot of this is already stuff that's done. And, and again, if we have a staff capacity issue, that's hiring more staff. From my perspective.
Code enforcement, I, I will agree with you. It is complaint driven. So maybe we just call it building compliance, whatever we call it. You know, the idea here is to take a lot of this weight off of some of these people that are working, that are already doing three or four jobs. And just to create a better information stream that I can make a phone call to, or maybe Ruby can. Cause there's been plenty of times I've asked a question and, um, Daryl will tell me I need to talk to Greg or somebody to talk to this or what have you.
And really, you should be talking to Robbie. But I mean, that's a whole different subject, honestly.
I didn't know Robbie was part of.
No, Robbie is the contact for city council.
Okay.
We don't, we don't.
Okay. Either way, it's just something that was suggested that, um, you know, the more I dug into it, it was obvious that it would definitely be a help. And I'll do exactly what you said, Ms. Ruben. We put together some stuff and, you know, the last few meets have been kind of crazy. Either way. It is what it is. I'll put together some stuff and, um, anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to address that.
Is, is the idea sort of the central, like to centralize and to centralize? I guess, and maybe this is from coming from the zoning board. Am I hearing you say that, uh, like zoning approves? And then from that point, it's kind of all on. Mike's office to, to.
And SafeBuild.
Do, well, Sa- SafeBuild, but also. Uh, to sort of follow up and make sure catalog the degree of compliance and. But so, so when questions come up about it, there's just a centralized. Code for all of that, that we, like, we can put it.
Correct. It's, it, it, that's exactly what I'm saying. It's just almost like creating a different section. Where it's like your medical records, that this is the record on this particular project. When it got voted in, when they broke dirt, but I mean, the, the permits listed right there, when they did this, what is timelines, everything else. Instead of having to dig through stuff. I mean, that, that's all I'm saying. When you're giving out eighty-four hundred houses on one permit, I mean, there's a lot going on there. And I can't imagine how.
But there are hundreds of other permits that happen as that stuff gets built out. Right? That SafeBuild's involved in again and again and again.
No, no, you're right. But if you do the math on that, there's enough process there to create a job that not only pays for the job. But actually brings money into the city.
And, and we've been talking about that. We know that, right? Those actually start building, we're gonna have.
Yeah.
The money and budget to bring.
Yeah, we budgeted for a development inspector. So it's in a budget for a development inspector. And we do have software, to your point, called Community Core. And every step of the way that the information goes into Community Core, we can run reports. Uh, Community Core tell you, hey, this permit is in this stage of the process. So we do have that software.
And, and I understand that. I'm just looking for an easier way to have oversight, that's all.
I would prefer.
You've got oversight.
Not everybody's good with it, I understand.
I would prefer that if it's, if we're gonna do something like this, that it, it's a trained staff, employee. And because I just think it, this sounds of, to me, pitting neighbor against neighbor kind of situation potentially. Which is never good. That doesn't have the expertise. You know, and it could be a storage shed location or anything like that. And it's better to be a third party handling that situation that has the rules and understands our regulations. That then can come back and, and, and not have that disagreement amongst neighbors potentially.
Yeah, I totally agree with what you're talking about from a process perspective. I just don't see. Made it, to me, it's just extra staff as demand calls for extra staff to do those functions, right? And, and if at some point building actually picks up. Then you have the money because the permits pay for the, the staffers, you know?
Finding the staff's the hard part.
I mean, always, but the, the. The point is anyway, that, that's a, a progress that happens, that's demand driven. There's no.
You know, I agree. That's, that's all I had. Somebody's got something more to chime in.
All right, uh, Ruby, uh, you want to talk about the community center at Cedar Grove?
Yes, okay, let me. Um, excuse me. So the Cedar Grove Community Center wanted to bring it back up. Last year in October, we brought it to you. Um, Chris and I, well, Chris applied for a grant, state grant, which we did not receive. The information of the, uh, dollars amount, this was taken last year in October, uh, the twenty-fourth. When we, um, you know, trying to get that grant. The one thing that struck me with the community center, and I, I went there a couple of times and even on Tuesday night. It is just so, um, the condition of it and for the people to be in there. I knew that the air or whatever was on, but it just smelled like mildew. It just needs so much upgrade. It's really disappointing in that we are allowing people to continue to be in there. But the people love it so much. They, they overlook the smell, they overlook everything. Um, and I just want to make sure that we can do something. Uh, we also are still looking for grants and stuff for Cedar Grove. But what can we do as a city to make this place better?
That feels to me like Robbie. You need to do. You and.
Yep.
Staff need to do an assessment of the building and, you know, kind of. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Already done that, sorry.
Yeah, we've done, yeah, I've done a layer, he's done a layer.
Awesome.
Um, so you, when, when he does his department report, by the way, during, during the council meeting. We may all need to yield time to Daryl because he's got a lot of stuff to tell you about. No, no, this is, this is now.
No, no, yeah, yeah.
All right, um, as you, you know, we've talked about this for several, several, several months, maybe even years.
Yeah.
Since we've taken it, uh, on Robbie and I have talked in depth and we've even brought some.
In the budgeting, yeah, yeah.
We did put it in the budget, so we went back out again and as I give you that little, uh, breakdown of what we want to do.
So that came from you.
This is a, we've got a breakdown of a, a scope, work, a scope of work. And this tells you what it does. And this, we're talking about approximately eighty-one thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And that's completely renovate the bathrooms, the kitchen, the floors, the painting, all this stuff needs to be done. If you remember a while back, the sewer, sewer system had been neglected for years, so we upgraded that as well. So we have, I'm glad that we brought it up. I want you to know we have this ready and been working on this. And it's part of my, when my due report, all the projects that we already been approved, that y'all have approved.
Right.
So at rest at ease, this is on the list of done.
Yeah, good.
Just, just.
That's what I thought.
Just make sure, cause we didn't, uh, Robbie gave us another additional hundred thousand dollars in my, uh, budget. For upcoming things. We knew this.
Right.
We was waiting on Ruby to, to, to bring it to council.
Good.
So it get approved. So we're ready for that. Uh, we're, we're way ahead of the ball, so we're gonna take care of that, ma'am.
Thank you so much. And I wanted to say also, dear, because anytime I have asked, you know, staff to go out there. Like yet last year, the tree was leaning. You guys went out there and cut that tree. It was two trees when you first come in. But one was leaning. I asked them, they went out and they cut it. So I appreciate all the work that you guys have been doing so that we can get to this space. Thank you so much.
And, and I'm glad too. I wasn't sure that this was the same conversation we've been having, or if this was a different conversation. So it's awesome. But, uh, we're already there. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right. Okay, the only, wait, the only other, other thing, I know I'm asking for too much, but maybe eventually we'll get some chairs and some internet so people can use it a little bit.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Daryl, is the only thing good on that building the brick?
The roof's. Roof's in decent shape, yeah, I read.
Yeah, I thought the structure was good. And the floor, the whole floor come out.
Good working HVAC is probably the biggest thing. Keeping it dehumidified. Yeah.
Yes, coming from that floor.
Yes.
What are, what are the current usage statistics and what's the capacity of the building?
Uh, events, as you know, Richie, Richie's used a few times for informing residents, uh, uh, for information. Uh, there's, the, every Tuesday, the community uses, the band plays, there's a lot of.
Right.
The community, they go every Tuesday and they play, uh, super nice people. They do a lot of little stuff throughout the year. To, to maintain and, and donate and help, so.
If it were nicer, it would get more use.
And I have had a Zumba class there and also had a food giveaway there, which we did the food giveaway outside. And we did the Zumba class inside. So I have had a couple of activities there myself.
Right, somebody in the room just mentioned the fact that, you know, they can't do art classes on the, the carpet down here. And like the idea of doing art classes down there, it makes perfect sense, right? So again, fix the places up and they're, they're usable and.
Yeah, it's a.
I think it's.
Just as long as y'all try to give me more staff, please.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's a great idea.
Thanks for your budget.
Thank you for, um, doing all the work there. And I think, you know, that's a lot of money and we're all talking instead of spending, you know, the residents' money that, you know, I'm just asking. If you would, uh, work with Robbie to come up with like policies for you. So once we get it nice, we protect it and.
Yeah.
Keep it nice inside.
Yeah.
If that's.
Oh, no, that sounds good. We do need to have a policy for certain things that can't, you know, happen in there and certain things that can.
Is that part of the rental policy? Do we have it when you sign up for that? Is there something already? So we just need to expand on that, maybe?
Right. We get deposits, but so.
But it's a facility that hasn't been much used, right? So it probably needs a thoughtful look.
There's a registration form and rules and stuff, but, um, it's. That, those rules probably were put together before that came into our city, so it might be good to.
To update it.
Look at that again.
Okay.
You go in there with horses and brush their mane or anything, so I want to.
I was just gonna offer that it's, it's worthy of note that in the last two weeks, I've had, uh, Atlanta Fulton County Emergency Management. Fulton County Board of Health and Red Cross down here looking at how disaster response or shelters or whatever would be. Would, those services would be delivered in the different areas of the city. Let's say when one whole area is shut down and you really need to move. Service delivery to people in, into another area. And the community center was, was looked at.
Yeah.
And, um, was. As, as is, face value was ruled out of play.
Yeah.
So.
But it is the backup, you know, the tornado gets this building, you get, right?
Right, thank you.
There's a storm, somebody go in.
All right. Oh, great. I, I'm, I'm glad because I know we had talked about this at budget time and I just wasn't sure if this was the same conversation. All right, uh, six, uh, Scott, public safety conversation.
Yeah, I, um, I was just thinking and, uh, and, and maybe some conversation about this. Uh, well. I've had a, I've had a few conversations with, uh, with public safety. Uh, uh, mostly Greg, but also, uh. Kevin and the, and we have, we have. Such superior public safety that with especially recent, um, recent, uh. Examples like Officer Carter's, uh, Citizen Academy, which went over so well and was so much appreciated. That, that raises the profile and the public awareness of, of these, you know, that these people have us and that they're, that, that. Uh, and, and I know Rodney's done ride-alongs. Have you done more of those? The, and so, so we have these points of contact with the public. And, uh, and, and there are opportunities at these meetings where we, you know, we get to hear some of what's going on and so on. But I'm, I was struck, I guess, as a, you know, council rep, at how often people ask about. Uh, you know, public safety issues. And it struck me that. For something so important and that we all regard as this, you know, this, this, you know, obviously just absolutely crucial. Consideration as, and particularly, I think, uh, as the city expands and we, and we look to. Uh, the future of it. In, in, in thinking of, of. That reciprocal relationship between, uh, between. The, the actual performance of, of public safety and all the great stuff they do for us. And the level of public awareness of that. It, it struck me that something like, you know, we have a parks commission, we have the tourism commission and stuff like that. And that maybe, and I'm not sure this is the answer, but it seems like it would be a way of sort of promoting. Public engagement without burdening our, our. Safety leadership to have like a, like a public safety commission kind of thing that would, that would. Sort of allow for a, a, sort of form a point of contact with. You know, cause I, I get the idea that we get this kind of complaint driven, you know? Like you, you probably hear about golf carts on Hudson Ferry and I hear about, uh, dirt bikes with no helmets. And so, you know, depending on where we are in the city and we, and we call and say, hey, what about this? But if there was a, a sort of, uh, I was, you know, I think of something like. One of our, our, you know, our excellent Parks Commission comes to mind, where we have this point of organization and contact or liaison. Because as the city grows, it's, it's going to. The responsibilities of the, of the leadership are gonna grow considerably. And I imagine that, that. And, and I, and I, and I'd love to hear from you guys and I, I've, I fell ill the last few days and was only able to talk to Greg. And I didn't get to talk to Kevin, but the, but I, I wanted to sort of throw out there this idea. Of the value of, of forming some kind of public safety commission. That would allow for reporting and oversight and kind of centralizing without the sort of. Highly occasional and idiosyncratic contact that's inspired by complaint often. Which, which to me seems like a burden, but I'm seeing it at distance. And so, does that make sense? The, um, and maybe Greg or Kevin, you could speak to this a little bit in terms of. How, you know, how do, how can we help you? In that regard, because we have, we, you know, we have these great. We have these, these great. Staff in public safety. And, you know, I can tell people individually about the ones that I know about. But I feel like if we had a commission that was maybe more highly aware of that, that those points, you know, there. I, and I mean, not to labor, you know, raise, but everybody in District Three. And probably more broadly knows, knows Officer Carter because he's at all these things. He's a presence there. And, uh, everybody knows numerous of Greg's guys who are, are a presence. And, and so we have these. This, this excellent staff, but the public, I think, would benefit from being more aware. But, but putting that burden on leadership whose job is to do leadership. Maybe seems like two, two, two burdens. I don't know. I'll stop talking, sorry.
I've got a question. Do you mean something like when you said liaison, point of contact, like? If somebody calls you, say someone who's not wearing a helmet or. Are, are you trying to find a way to communicate some?
Are, are you trying to find a way to communicate some ways for, um, Greg or Kevin or. To the public, like those signs that say speed limit's forty five? You're going fifty three or please wear a helmet when you.
Not, not so much like that, but that, but that, that we would have some, uh. Less idiosyncratic, more organized citizen sort of engagement slash oversight of, of. Promoting public awareness of public safety.
Select a PR for the laws?
Oh, not, not necessarily for the, for the laws themselves. The awareness of that would be enhanced by something like this. Because I think, I think.
It, it sounds like you're talking about a booster club. I mean, like, I.
I'm not talking about a booster club so much as something, as, as something that would, uh. And, and again, I'm not in law enforcement or public safety. And so I don't have the vocabulary to put it forward. But I'm, but I'm. Did, did Kevin, you look like you want to answer?
No, yeah.
It almost sounds like you're describing a public information officer. Something that, that puts out, I mean.
Yeah.
Puts out what, I mean, what the officers are doing. I mean. We have several, you, you mentioned the, the Citizens Police Academy, but that's not the only community engagement that the police department does. I mean, every Friday, the last Friday of every month, AK does Storytime with AK. That's what it's called, Storytime with AK at the charter school. And she sits there with the first, second and third graders and can read stories to them. Um, we've, we've had, we've had several, a couple of businesses contacted us this week that want to do pancake with a. Pancake with the police, which was great because I love pancakes, but you know, whatever.
Well, exactly. You, you yourself, uh, have come and spoken at several of the churches, for example. I was, I, I saw you, saw you at, uh, Sardis and that, and, and I think that. I don't think we need to hire staff for that. I think we've got citizens who would, who would love to, to.
But that, that does sound more like, because I've been in a city that had that. I've been in a city and I don't, it wasn't called the Booster Club. I don't remember what it was called, but effectively that's what it was. They helped the police whenever the police needed help with something that wasn't a police function, right? And it's very different from the Parks Commission in, in my mind, because the Parks Commission is doing things like going out and lobbying for grants to build more parks and get more parks. And they're out working on trails. And I mean, they're doing stuff that we don't have staff capacity to do sometimes, cleaning up the river, those sorts of things. Where policing is definitely one of those things where you don't want citizens out policing, right? But, but like helping with, with, to your point, right? Like getting groups together, helping set up the pancake breakfasts or whatever those things are. Seems like a great idea, right? The, and, and again, a booster may not be the right name for it, but.
And you might be thinking of Public Safety Foundation and I'll steal Greg's thunder.
Yeah, that's actually what it was where, yeah.
There's been cities that have public safety foundations that are in place, that are citizens that are basically champions of police and fire. And when there's a need, let's say Greg needed a, a, a emergency transport vehicle, which he did a couple of years ago. And we're like, hey, we need, we don't have the money to purchase it. And all of a sudden people donated. We were able to purchase an emergency transport vehicle. That's a public safety foundation. So I don't know if we're looking for something like that or.
And Scott, to be clear, I don't want to, I don't want to dismiss what you're saying at all. I just, when I saw oversight. My mind immediately went to those kind of combative, combative environments in big cities where. You know, the cops are like always accused of beating people up and everything, and they've got police oversight to need to deal with those claims and all that.
No, I'm not.
Like, that's like the furthest thing from what happens here.
Well, exactly.
What you're talking about is support, right?
I'm, yeah, I'm talking, I'm talking about support and awareness because of, because as things, as things grow. We're like, right now, we have this kind of amazingly up close and personal. Like all kinds of people know these guys and know the officers. And that I, I see that as we move into the future and the population begins to really grow, becoming more difficult.
And no, you, you end up with beef then where people end up doing that same thing in smaller areas in the city, right? The community oriented policing can scale with the city.
Well, absolutely. And, and right, believe it or not, the city is, for the police department is actually split into, into three zones. That we've, that in, and our dispatch actually has the city in three zones. Um, we have never used it because we've never had to. But yes, to your point, we, 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 um.
You're already ready to scale into it when you need to.
Of course, any positive help from, and, and you know, one of the things that I, I tell potentially new officers. Is it's kind of a running joke, but not really a running joke, um, that. We have a very supportive community here. We have a very supportive council. I tell, again, I tell all new hires, you know, we have a very supportive council. We have a, a city manager that used to be a police officer. And the, the running joke of don't be on a diet during the holidays here because you're going to come in and there's going to be cakes and coats and donuts.
Yeah, 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 right.
You know, homemade stuff from the citizens because our citizens love us. So, um, I mean, I'm always. Grateful and always, um, welcoming to any type of, of needing help. You know, I, I try to utilize our, our social media to get things out as best as, as best as I can.
Well, I think, I think, I think all of you do a great job of that. I, I guess I was, it, it seemed to me. And I guess this goes to, again, thinking about the future. Think, uh, in having that sort of rather than ad hoc. On the citizens' part and or, you know, just being organized as an, as an opportunity for people.
But again, more of a support thing than a, like an oversight. That, that's, again, that's the word I'm looking into.
I guess, I don't, I don't understand the legal force of that word maybe.
Yeah.
Municipal structures, I.
Again, oversight boards typically have review. Procedures that are, you know, in those cases where there's an issue with the police department. That's where I've seen them used. I, again, I don't even know if someplace like Peachtree City has that, right? That's a big city thing.
Yeah, I'm curious to hear what.
Like Chicago or whatever.
What Rick has, I said, when I heard, saw the word oversight and then I heard the explanation of a port of awareness. Give us your insight with your experience.
Listening to what folks are saying, I would suggest to you that maybe that's like a foundation. Something like what we've done with the, um, mentioned visitors, visitors bureau, but really with the, the nonprofit. That, um, kind of works with that. If you want to create a nonprofit that can take donations. And can help support the police, then you could do that. And, and the council could appoint. Couple of people that are on there, maybe businesses, uh, appoint a couple. I mean, we could set it up, uh, some, something like that if that's what the council wants to do.
Some grant opportunities that look for those kind of foundations too.
Right.
Like you might actually be able to leverage that into some extra money for them.
Right. And, and, you know, and give council some input by, again, having council. The authority to appoint a couple of people who sit on that board and it rotates, whatever else, but that. I, that's just what's going through my mind, listening to what discussions are.
I mean, it makes. Sorry about the word oversight there, but you, you get the idea of what I'm.
Yeah, totally. I, I think so, right? And that, that does sound like what Rick is saying to me.
And I think, and I think what it would do is promote that, uh, love, you know, promote a level of citizen engagement and awareness. That would sort of diffuse out from citizen to citizen.
If I may, Scott, let me talk to the chiefs, um, get their input on this and, and then I'll shoot you an email. It'll be a month from now before I can do that. Um, but then once I kind of have the parameters or maybe what is wanted, I'll bring it back to council. If council wants me to create it, I'll create the nonprofit for you.
Okay.
So they could accept it. Um, yeah, so it'll be, be a month before I can get to it, if that's okay.
Great. Uh, anything else? Anybody? If not, let's, uh, we have fifteen minutes before we get back and. There. Take that minute to. I know, right? Yeah.